Okay, everyone, I've got nine o'clock, but we're going to allow a couple more minutes for people to settle in. If you're all already, welcome, and we're just gonna linger here a minute or two until we can get more participants signed on and get everybody's systems up and running. But welcome. Beautiful day outside. Pretty chilly. Glad we were able to stay in our homes a little bit for this session. But thank you for joining us. Just another minute and we'll get things going. All right, welcome neighbors and voters in Lee. We're going to kick off this 2021 temporary optional town meeting of information section number one, which is what we're here to do today. Some of you are joining us on the Zoom function and some of you by phone. If you're joining us by phone and you can see the slides that we're presenting and the information that's being presented by finding those documents on the town website. So you can go to the website. If you're not able to see them on a Zoom function and see the documents to be discussed at that point. I'm Don Quigley, the moderator. Been moderator for the past year. And in that year, we've had some great adventures and deliberative session last year at this time, a year ago, followed by four elections that we've run in town. Each one of those elections was more complicated than the one before based on these voting sessions based on our COVID-19 pandemic and problems related to it. And so I think we were able to pull off some reasonable elections over that period of time, culminating with the big national election in November where we had record numbers of voters. But problems have been presented all along by trying to find ways to keep the voters and the poll workers as safe as possible throughout the process. And today's section is going to be an example of sort of weighing the balance between safety and our concerns about exposure and risk with the democratic process that we've all enjoyed for as our traditions. So we had to make some tough calls about this today. Input was gathered across the town administration, our governing body, our town administrators, our town health and safety officer. Questions on how to keep the safest possible environment without packing people into one room. And and so we came up with this test technology. While this technology allows accessibility to some, it excludes others. And so had we held this as a deliberative section in one room, of course, we would have eliminated some and included others. And so this was a tough call on the on the part of the town, town administrators. We recognize also that this deliberative session that we did a year ago at this time drew a very small cross-section of our town, although the people that have participated in our traditional deliberative sessions have been our most engaged voters in the community, and I'm sure there's a disappointment to them that we won't be doing our traditional in-face deliberation of these articles. Also, playing into our decision to do this method today was the fact that our warrant articles this year are not as complicated as they've been in the past. There are no petition articles, there are no bond articles. And there are 16 articles presented, many of which are pretty typical of the kind of administrative articles that we've we've dealt with in the past. So that played into our decision as well with this process. In December, the New Hampshire Legislature passed House Bill 1129 allowing us allowing and setting guidelines for a process which provides for maximum safety and the least impact on our democratic traditions. And after a lot of debate in our town and community, we decided to adopt this system temporarily. And that's the key. If I'm still moderator a year from now, we will be back in our traditional deliberative session in our because of the value we all have in an orderly debate among our neighbors to determine our governance. And so I think that's a sacred tradition. We're going to go back to it as soon as we can and can do it safely. In that vein, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I want to start out by introducing the people who are going to be administering this process with us today. First of all, our town administrator Julie Glover and her administrative assistant Denise Duval are with us. Town clerk Linda Reinhold and her assistant Liz Stone are with us today. Our assistant moderator Karen Long, who will be working with us in in our question and answer function that we're going to be doing in a little while. The select board is here with us. Our chairman of the select board is John Lacourse. Scott Bugby and Carrie Brown. All of these folks that I've named have been involved in deliberating about what we're going to be working on today. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Julie to have Julie sort of just recap the instructions and objectives for today's town meeting. And so that we're all on the same page with information. That's the the goal of this session today is information primarily. So Julie.
Julie, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
As Mr. Quigley said, there were a number of meetings and discussions that got us to this point. Both the select board and the moderator elected to follow the procedures under HB 1129, temporary optional town meeting procedures. So first, the governing body must hold two live virtual meetings. One meeting to inform the voters about the proposed optional meeting procedures and to discuss the warrant articles. That's what we are doing today. And the second is to finalize the warrant content to move the articles to the ballot for the meeting on March 9. Part of the procedures involves mailing a notice of these meetings to all of the registered voters. So during this first session, the moderator made a decision to allow questions from participants as each article is read, in addition to allowing questions at the end. We would like you to use the Q and A function for this. So please don't raise your hand or use the chat feature. Karen Long, the deputy moderator, will be monitoring the questions and they will be answered. After this meeting, if anyone has any further questions or comments, they can submit them up to noon on February 5. You can email them, you can mail them, you can call, you can drop them off. All of the comments must include your name and address. And your name and the content of your comments will be shared publicly during the second session, which is on February 6. And the select board reserves the right to summarize comments greater than 100 words. So again, the second virtual session will be held on February 6, again, starting at 9:00 AM using the same meeting ID and password and phone number. One thing to point out that the second warrant article, as you'll see in a couple of minutes, will be to ask the voters if they approve of this process. This was again a requirement under HB 1129. If a majority of the voters don't approve, then all of the rest of the articles are considered null and void. In other words, they won't pass. On March 9, we are going to hold our regular municipal election at the transfer station from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And the voting will be conducted by drive-through so that people can vote from the safety of their vehicles. We encourage anyone who is not yet registered to vote to do so in advance. You can also file for an absentee ballot. And for either of those, you should contact the town clerk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Just to reiterate just a little bit, what we're going to do now is go through the warrant articles all the way 1 through 16. After the first two, we get, we'll start out with 1 and 2, and we get to Article 3, which is our budget article. There'll be a presentation by selectman Scott Bugby about the the article. And following Article 3, that's when we're going to engage in the question and answer. So again, you'll go to the question and answer icon at the bottom of your Zoom page, click on it. Start out with your name and address and then type a brief question. And these questions are for clarification about the article. So at this point, we're trying to get you get help you understand the article, get clarification of the points of the article. And and we'll give you some time after each article is presented in order to compose a question and get it sent in. And so there'll be a little pause after each article for you to be allowed to pose that question and get it sent into us. Then at the end, after the articles are presented, we're going to open up the floor for more questions of clarifications about the process, about things we're going to do between now and next week at this time, how you can have input into into the formation of these articles to establish the final ballot for voting on March 9. So the general comments about the process, general questions about what's going to happen from here on in is we're going to do that at the end after each of the articles. Okay, so let me get started with Article 1. Article 1 is basically just to choose all necessary town officers for the the next year. And we'll be looking at selectmen and the trustee of the trust funds, library trustees, cemetery trustees, et cetera. And and that's what we're going to be doing with an Article 1. So we're not going to take any questions or discussions about that because it's going to be pretty straightforward. Article 2. Oh, by the way, Article 1, even if the Article 2, which is do you approve the optional meeting procedures used only in 2021 due to COVID-19 pandemic that solicited the public's input on the warrant through the use of virtual information meetings rather than in-person deliberative sessions? Select Board recommends this article. As Julie said before, if this article does not pass, all the other subsequent articles are considered to be failed. So however, the budget is the exception to that. The budget, we have two options. If the Article 2 does not pass, the budget can, we can have a meeting to to adopt the budget later on in the year. Or we can have a default budget, and that will be the decision of the governing body to do that. Okay, so we'll move to Article 3. And so this is going to be a presentation by Scott Bugby. So please read Article 3.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, everybody. Article number three, operating budget. Shall the town of Lee raise and appropriate as an operating budget not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by the vote of the first session for purposes set wherein totaling $4,574,348. Should this article be defeated, the default budget will be $4,272,376, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the select board or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40 colon 13, Sections 10 and 16, to take up the issue of the revised operating budget only. The select board recommends this article. Majority vote required. This is a detail of the operating budget, giving you an idea in terms of the differences from the current budget that we're in. And we're going to go through the major sources of increases and decreases. So the overall increase from FY '21 is $297,888, which is approximately a 6.97% change. The personnel budget reflects an additional cost associated with bonuses. One additional firefighter, one additional full-time police officer, and increases in our Hampshire retirement system contributions. And a 9% increase in health insurance premium rates. The government billions line contains overall increase of $44,375 due to expenses associated with the new town office building and reductions in utility costs for the town hall and the town annex. The property liability insurance premium is estimated an increase of $3,311. The police department budget includes wages for a new full-time police officer and eliminates the cost for the new police cruiser. And next is the McGregor ambulance service, which has an increase of $4,363. The fire department budget has an increase of $46,245, which includes funding for an additional full-time firefighter, an increase in part-time firefighter and night shift wages, and decreases to equipment maintenance and radio repair, conference and travel, and diesel fuel. The transfer station and solid waste budgets together have an overall increase of $3,502, which includes additional costs for solid waste disposal and hauling costs and a decrease to other multiple line items. Health agencies, Lamprey Healthcare did not request funds this year, and women may requested $2,000 for the first time. Goodwin Community Center and Ready Health Rise reduced their funding requests and resulted in an overall reduction of $2,453. Next slide. There we go. Recreation budget reduced funding for events by $1,500. And Lee Fair did not request any funds for FY 2020, 2022, excuse me. Library budget increased hours for the youth librarian and technician number one and eliminated hours for technician 2. Payroll expenses increased by $11,236 and the annual support payment by 2,000. Heritage and agricultural commissions budgets were not funded at their request. And the conservation commission requested $7,000. Next slide is a nice graph showing increases in the operating budget. So as you can see, we're on a very upward trend. There were some increases to the town's portion of retirement and also some changes in terms of personnel. So that's what's driving our operating budget. Revenue. Revenue's been going up for the last three years or so. It's kind of plateauing at the moment. And the biggest revenue that the town has is from registrations for cars and vehicles. And the all-important tax rate for the town. As you can see, the town's only about 21%. The biggest part of our tax rate for the town is the school. And the last slide that I have is all the capital reserve counts. This gives you an idea of what we've been putting aside for money. There is a column for FY '22, which we'll get to in all the warrant articles that are coming after this. But this gives you an idea of what's in those particular funds that we're putting in for this particular year. And that is all at this time, Mr. Moderator.
Thanks, Scott. That's quite a bit of information. So we're going to pause at this point for a little while, and I see there are a couple of questions that showed up in our question and answer function. And they came in early. I'm not sure they're about this article, but I think it's a good, maybe a good time to get caught up on the preliminary questions that came in. Keep in mind that we're not monitoring the chat function at this time. And so Karen Long, what are the questions that you're seeing at this point?
The first question we have is from Eric Sawtell. How will you determine whether an article moves forward if you can't raise a voter card instead of as or instead of a live meeting?
So let me try to answer that question. The way we're going to do that is that's going to be next week's function, next Saturday morning. This week, all voters have a chance to send questions and comments into the town hall. If you look at your initial sort of postcard that came out with the information on it, there are several different ways to contact the town hall with your comments and questions. The way we're going to move these articles forward to the official ballot is that the governing body, that is the select board, will receive all the comments that come in from the voters. And some of those comments might be in the form of an encouragement to make an amendment to the to the article. They might say, I recommend to the select board that we amend article so so and so in a certain way. Next week, the select board, the governing body, will take up these comments and suggestions. They may choose if you make a rational and and reasonable argument about a modification to an article or an amendment to an article. It will be up to the governing body to to take that up and among themselves will vote to amend an article. Now, this is only going to work if the governing body, you know, the success of this is going to be directly proportional to the extent that the governing body's actions at the virtual meeting represent the sentiments and expectations of the community. So we're depending on the governing body to make the the final adjustment to these based on the input of the voters throughout this week. So we would hope that people take the opportunity they have to make a reasonable reasonable and reasoned suggestion to modify these articles, and then the the governing body will put them in place at our meeting next next week, next Saturday. Another question, Karen.
Our second question is from Martin Castle, 135 Stepping Stones Road. So if the meeting is declared void, then what is the next step? Again, how do you approve something before the voting and not have adequate discussion?
It's one of the liabilities of the system we've chosen is that the discussion is going to have to take place between the voters and the governing body for next Saturday.
Martin had a follow-up question that I was about to type an answer to. Why do all of the town departments have a capital reserve fund, but there is no reserve fund for the library? And then he has, I recommend the town raise and appropriate $20,000 for the library capital reserve fund.
Okay, so that's a good comment to to record for this week. Following the directions on the original sort of instructions that came out to the town about how to register your comments and recommendations for the governing body for next week. So that will be something that please be sure that you forward that through the mechanisms that we've outlined to the town and the governing body will take that up next week.
There's one other with Annie Gaskowski. Do you have a question? She didn't. Okay. Annie is stating, I just want to make sure that I understand that in March, we will vote on the whole warrant article, but Article 2 will determine the outcome of Articles 4 to 16. If that is the case, it is unfortunate.
I agree. It's an unfortunate part of the system that we've adopted. I believe that most of the voters in the town will support Article 2 and support the process we've adopted. Keep in mind, our motivation for this is the safety of the community. And so that's what forged our sort of decision-making process all along. We hope that the voters will understand and appreciate that at this time when, you know, this pandemic is not sort of shown us that in a few months, it's going to be any different than it is now relative to all getting together to vote, all getting together to discuss new variants on the horizon of this thing. So decision was made for this, and so it is. If number two fails, which we certainly hope that it does not, all the other articles will be defeated. Any other questions, Karen?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to Article 3. Excuse me, Article 4. Who's our presenter for Article 4?
I am Carrie Brown. Article 4 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $650,000 for the purchase, I'm sorry, for the purpose of purchasing an engine and related equipment. The new engine would be to the latest design standards. The current, the current engine that we're operating is a year 2000 engine or a year 2000, yes, engine truck. And it's it's got some wear and tear as you would expect. So we want to replace that engine. We want to authorize the withdrawal of the amount of 650,000 from the fire equipment capital reserve fund. The select board recommends this article. Majority vote is required. This article is kind of attached at the hip with warrant article number five. So if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and let me read that to attach it.
Okay, so we're putting Article 4 and 5 together for your presentation, right?
Right. Warrant Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,000 to be deposited into the fire equipment capital reserve fund. The select board recommends this article. Majority vote required. As you see, that that bottom bullet there is very important. This fund already has a balance of $621,242. We just need some additional funds placed in there to cover the price of the new truck along with along with the new equipment that will be ordered with it. I believe Chief Nemet, are you there?
Yep.
So Scott, if you would, if you have some comments that you want to add to this.
Yep. So like Mr. Brown said, we're replacing a 2000 International KME fire engine, our engine 1, which is 21 years old. We're going to hopefully update to a five-person cab with added safety features such as rollover protection inside airbags, something that our newest tanker was the first truck that had that. We're replacing a 1250 gallon permanent pump with a 1500 gallon permanent pump. So we're upping that size. It's going to have computerized pump controls for built-in safety. Current engine 1 has a manual pump control with no safety features. Current Engine 1 has a manual pump control with no safety features. It's going to have a 1,000 gallon water tank and a 30 gallon foam tank on it. No foam is currently on Engine 1. It's capable of running foam through three of the hose lines from an onboard foam system. The interior EMS cabinet is to help us with our fire and EMS role and to secure the equipment for firefighter safety. It's going to be taking over the roles as the first due engine for fire alarm, fire alarms, fires and CO calls. We're adding a light tower for added safety feature and scene visibility. Currently, Engine 1 does not have one. We're also going to have an onboard PTO-driven 10 KW generator with cord reels. Currently, our Engine 1 only has a portable generator and has no cord rail. We're going to upgrade all the LED emergency scene lights for safety and decrease load on the vehicle's energy demand. Increase compartment space for equipment storage. The interior compartment is going to be for ground ladders and suction hoses, which protects the ground ladders from all the elements of the weather. The front bumper hand line is going to have foam capabilities. The current Engine 1 does not have that. Hopefully, next week, we'll be putting the RFP out, and so we'll be getting the bid shortly. Something that I want to also say about this with warrant Article 5, when we purchased the new tanker, we traded in the tanker towards the value of that truck, which lowered the cost. We're going to be doing the same thing with this. Engine 1 is going to be going to be traded in, so that's going to lower the cost of the truck as well.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay, so that was Article 4 and 5. Are there any questions related to Articles 4 and 5 coming in, Karen?
Yep, we had one from Jen Messler, who noticed a typo, which I responded back that we did catch, and that will be taken care of as part of the amendments prior to next week's session. We have another one from Paul Gaskowski. For the record, the previous question about Article 2 came from me, not Annie. The next question, if Article 2 fails, is there any future special meeting option restricted to just the consideration of Article 3? Or can other warrant articles be considered? Paul Gaskowski, 46 Lamprey Lane.
It is our understanding at this time that other articles can't be reconsidered, but the budget can be reconsidered via either called town meeting or default to the 2020 budget. So that's to be determined by the governing body. Of course, you're right about all the concerns about Article 2. I think it's in our best interest to to work with the town and try to get people to realize that the methods that we've selected for today can have some success as far as being close to what we've done in the past. If people are willing to make comments to the town throughout this next week in the way that we've recommended, and through those comments and suggestions, rely on our governing body to make some reason reasoning of these questions that come in, and finally respond by setting the budget, excuse me, setting the ballot in a way that represents the town's best interests. Are any questions coming in relative to Articles 4 and 5?
I have no other answers, no other questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think at the end of this session, what we're going to do, I mean, we have 41 participants at this point. Let's get through the articles with questions about the articles. And at the end, maybe we can open this up for more discussion and even allow a raised and function at that point. And after we finish the articles and finish the rest of our presentation. So let's move on to Article 6.
Article 6 concerns Fire Ponds and Cisterns Capital Reserve Fund. If you don't mind, I'm going to put a little commentary here just for maybe new people, et cetera, that, new citizens that don't understand this. The town, the fire department maintains a series of cisterns and a series of water ponds to provide throughout the town a supply of water for the trucks to use in fighting a fire. The cisterns are strategically placed throughout the town. Ponds are identified. And these ponds have to be maintained to the sense that we need to clear them out periodically. So the hoses, when you drop the hose in them, don't get plugged up. And the cisterns provide a better source of water. They hold 80,000 gallons and allow the fire trucks, the pumpers, to have a quick source of water. As I said, they are strategically placed throughout the town. Warrant Article 6, Fire Ponds and Cisterns Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be deposited into the Fire Ponds and Cisterns Capital Reserve Fund. The select board recommends this article. Majority vote is required. As of 12/31/20, this fund had a balance of $152,241.
Okay, we'll pause for a moment, see if questions are coming in relative to Article 6. Looks like we have a couple of questions.
Chris Fregan from 19-year-old drive, looks like he's in the process of asking a question.
Okay.
His question is, what is the average annual cost for maintaining ponds and cisterns?
Okay, who can answer that one?
So it's on annual cost. We go around and look at all of our fire ponds and cisterns that we do have. Recently, two years ago, we dredged two of our fire ponds and cut away all the brush to maintain them. That was over $25,000. So we do have a list, and we do have the capital improvements plan that we look at. And we just kind of set a timeline on our own to work with these and upgrade them as we go. I won't add to that. We are, later on, warrant Article 15 discusses this some more. Recently, we've been talking about maintaining them annually and working with the highway department to keep the brush back and work on some of the tree work. So we are looking at that, but that's going to be in our current budget, not on the capital improvements plan.
So this is a, what would be your annual sort of expense to maintain these things?
Working with the highway department, we've discussed this to rent the machinery. It's probably about $1,000 to $2,000 a year to maintain all of them that we have in town.
All right, any other questions about Article 6 coming in, Karen?
No, we do not have any other questions.
All right, so we'll move to Article 7.
Good morning, Mr. Moderator, and welcome to everybody in the town of Lee. This is warrant Article 7, Public Library Addition and Renovation Project, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $100,000 to be used for the renovation addition to Lee Public Library Building and to authorize withdrawal of this amount from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund. The project is to be accomplished in phases, beginning with the addition and basement renovations, and culminating in the schoolhouse portion of the library being repurposed as the children's area. The total project is estimated to cost approximately $800,000. Currently, there are combined public and private funds available in the amount of $600,000. And the remainder of the funds will come from fundraising and grants. The select board recommends this article. Majority vote required. As of 12/31/20, this fund had a balance of $130,469. Just a comment at this time, as you know, the library is heavily used by the townsfolk and children of Lee. And for years now, the library trustees and people in the town of Lee have been interested in renovating this library and possibly putting addition onto it. So the floor is open at this time. Maybe a trustee or somebody can speak to this particular issue.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a point?
Sure.
The capital reserve fund that's referenced is the library public building. Can you quantify in terms of, I'm showing on my list, the library public building has a balance of about $384,930. It's the library capital reserve fund that has $130,000 balance. Can somebody qualify that for me? Mr. Tappin, maybe can maybe make a comment?
Comment for Mr. Tappin?
Do you want me to allow him to speak in other words? Because that's
I'm not running the meeting. If the moderator were allowing to speak, that would be great, but I think we need clarification.
For clarification of this article, if Mr. Tappin is available and we can allow him to speak, that would be helpful.
Okay, he can speak.
Do we have Mr. Tappin?
Julie, can you unmute him?
I thought I just did.
Nope.
No, he needs to unmute himself.
Mr. Tappin?
No.
Is Mr. Tappin on the Zoom session?
Someone identifying themselves as John and Ann Tappin are.
And Katrinka is asking to speak as well. One of the trustees.
Yep, she should have that ability.
She has put a, she has, the library capital reserve fund that they're withdrawing to withdraw the 100,000 from has a balance that's listed on the slide. I guess the question is, the library building capital reserve fund?
Yes, it's a difference in terms of the name of the funds. Because the Lee Public Library Building, I'm not sure. It's a little bit confusing. I wanted somebody to quantify what exactly it is and name the fund appropriately.
Hello? May I say something? Scott, there are two capital reserve funds. The library one with $130,000 is our very original fund. Back many years ago, I think it was in 2014, we put $80,000 in that fund specifically for the building of the library. The next year, we established what is now called the building fund because it seemed like that was, it was a better idea. That's the one I think you're confused about that has around 300 and something in it that the selectmen or the agents to expend. But the original library capital reserve fund, we need to do warrant articles to expend. There's no new taxation. This money was put in years ago for the library for capital projects. And that's the one that this warrant article addresses, not the building fund, which is, you know, the larger fund. Does that make it clear?
Yeah, I understand what you're trying to do. It's the terminology in the last paragraph that says from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, which is the one that has the $384,000 in it. So the name of the fund needs to be changed.
Oh, then it's wrong.
That's the point I'm trying to make. The number that's noticed in terms of $130,000, 460, whatever it is, $9, that's not the same fund as being referenced in the first paragraph.
That is correct. I think we originally had two warrant articles to put, we wanted to put some money into the building capital reserve fund. And I think somehow they've got this, it got conflated.
I accepted the article from the trustees.
Okay, well, then it's our error, but I don't have what we originally sent. But anyway, it is the Lee Library, you know, yes, capital reserve fund.
All right.
We don't, John Tappin has got his hand raised. It looks like he may have logged in independently.
Can you say that again, Karen?
John Tappin has his hand raised. It looks like he has logged in separately.
Yep, okay, he can talk.
Okay, John Tappin?
Yeah, I've moved to a place where I do have a microphone now. I was only intending to watch. So yes, the fund that is referenced here, the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund is the fund that has currently approximately $388,000 in it. The select board has been designated as the agent to expend. So the select board can expend money from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund without additional authorization from the voters. And I understand that it is the intention that this $100,000 was to come from the library capital reserve fund, which does currently have the amount that stated at the bottom, plus some additional interest. And that fund does not have a named agent to expend. And so that fund, the library capital reserve fund, requires authorization from the voters to expend money from the fund. Any other questions about that?
Answer your question, Scott.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so it is an excellent opportunity for this group, John Tappin and Katrinka, to formulate a recommendation for an amendment to this article for our governing body to take up at the meeting next week. So hopefully, you'll be able to get together and recommend an amendment for next week's assigning this to the regular ballot.
Speaking for the trustees of trust funds, it is entirely up to the library trustees as to where they want to take this money from. It could be taken from either. It's up to the trustees. Right now, the total between the two funds is rounded off approximately $520,000.
Hopefully, we'll see a recommendation to amend the wording of this article for deliberation next week. Okay, Katrinka?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just put something in the chat. Yeah, we'll double check it and get it to Julie first thing next week.
So that's what the, how the system we're working today, that's our intent. So that this will be officially accepted and transferred to the regular ballot for next week as amended. Okay, thank, any other questions about Article 7?
Yes, I have two, but first off, I have just a thing for record. When people are speaking, including panelists that we're inviting on to speak, that they should please state their names so that everybody realizes who's talking.
Excellent, good reminder. Please keep us going on that vein.
Continuing on, I have Christopher Barzy, 56 Campground Road. His question is, is it possible to say more quantitatively how much use the library sees? Maybe about how many people use it each week? Thank you.
Okay, who would best answer that question?
Yes, Ruth Eifer, library director.
Okay, Ruth Eifer?
Yes, sure.
Yes, sure. The circulation for the library, um, last year in fiscal year twenty, we had, um, over almost thirty three thousand items borrowed from the library, and that included during the months that we were closed for pandemic, March, April, May, and most of June. The visitor counts up until the pandemic closed the library temporarily. We had fourteen thousand people visit the library during that year. We also circulate over almost eight thousand things that are being downloaded through the New Hampshire Overdrive Database. The usage in the library since, let me pull up that statistic, since July, we've seen, uh, but almost three thousand people come into the library since July. That's during the pandemic. We're doing a huge amount of curbside, um, circulation. And my manual counter actually says six thousand people have come in in the last six months, and that's probably pretty close, um, at least how many we have served. We have about twenty five hundred library card holders that are active library card users. That answers the question?
Thank you, Ruth.
Sure.
Karen?
Yes, our next question is from Rich Messider, one forty seven Wadley Falls Road, regarding Article Seven. What does combined public and private funds available mean? Are they committed or must we still apply for them? In which case, are they guaranteed?
Who can answer that question for us? Would this be a question for a library trustee or a library director?
Yep.
Or for our town administrator?
Katrinka can answer, John Tappan can answer.
Uh, this is John Tappan.
Tappan.
Uh, trustee of trust funds. There are two funds. The Library Building Capital Reserve Fund presently has three hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars in it. There are some expenses that are already planned to be spent from that this year. And the Library Capital Reserve Fund has a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars in it. The total there is five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Both of these funds are, were created specifically for the library. So without a change of purpose warrant article, they are strictly dedicated to the library. As to the rest of the amount beyond the five hundred and twenty thousand, um, the library trustees would need to speak to that.
We have two trustees that are willing to answer Katrinka and Annie. Annie has a question.
Katrinka?
Julie needs to.
Yep.
Unmute.
Uh, okay. And. Okay, they should both be able to speak.
Yeah, hi, this is Katrinka Palakian, always held over on the Lockwood Trustee. And I'm also on the foundation, which is the fundraising organization. John is correct about the, the two funds. And we also have been getting donations. The foundation has been working for several years, as you know, and we have over a hundred thousand, um, raised and are, will obviously be working to, now that we're, have a project to raise money for, we'll be working for that. We also have some donations that have come into the library for the building. So that's where the estimate of the six hundred thousand comes from, and we'll be doing more active fundraising as we move forward and also applying for grants. So that's the public and private combination.
Thank you. Karen, was there another commenter here?
No, but John Tappan has his hand raised.
Okay, John Tappan. Unmute yourself, John.
The five hundred and twenty thousand dollars which I mentioned, um, the amount that's not included there in that amount is, or rather, the amount to be subtracted from that is what is already been approved to be spent this year. I know that some amount has been approved to be spent for architectural fees, um, and there's also planned some additional, um, engineering or geotechnical fees. So that five hundred and twenty thousand, uh, is not expected to be all there at the end of this year.
Okay, thank you. Karen, are any other questions on Article Seven?
We have no other questions.
Hearing none, we'll move to Article Eight.
Thank you, John Lacourse here. Again, warrant Article Eight, Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to be deposited into Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, the Select Board recommends this article. Majority vote required as of twelve thirty one twenty, this fund had a balance of three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars.
Any commentary, Mr. Lacourse?
Only in a sense, this is a fund that we traditionally put money into, and obviously it's associated with highway equipment, which could include anything from, you know, purchasing, plow trucks or purchasing, you know, plows or anything that's associated with capital equipment. Maybe the, Steve can respond to any of this as well.
Yeah, so this is the fund we normally buy, like John said, plow trucks. We just got approved to buy a pickup truck out of this fund, so there'll be money taken out for that to replace, um, our current oldest plowed pickup truck. We buy, we invite, um, like the buffalo turbines for blowing the leaves off the fields, lawn mowers for maintaining the field, so that's what we, uh, use this fund for.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
So we'll hesitate a little bit for questions coming in about Article Eight. What do you think, Karen? Anything coming in on Article Eight?
No questions at this time.
I know we're not giving, uh, giving you much time in between, so if you, uh, again, at the end, we're going to open it up after the articles are presented for general question, general commentary. Okay, if that's the case, we're going to move to Article Nine.
John Lacourse again, warrant Article Nine, Highway Department Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be deposited into the Highway Department Road and Bridge Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required as of twelve thirty one twenty, this fund has a balance of five hundred and forty three thousand, five hundred and thirty three dollars. Obviously, there are bridges in the town of Lee, and they're quite expensive to replace, and this fund has been put together so over time, we can gather enough funds that we can replace and, and do maintenance on these particular bridges in Lee. Steve, any comment?
Yeah, just comment on how like, how, like what you were saying, how much money's in the fund, so, um, the High Road Bridge costs over a million dollars to replace. We're going to have bridges coming up that are about the same as that on Cartland Road and other one on Tunnel Road, plus we have two big culvert projects that we're working on, and some of those culvert projects are going to be up around three hundred thousand dollars to do, so. The issue is why they're so expensive is because we're so close to, uh, major protected rivers with endangered species, so we have to do some extra things.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. So we'll hang out for a minute on question nine, or Article Nine.
Oh, did we get bubble wrap? Good.
Karen Long, any questions coming in on Article Nine?
There are no questions.
All right, again, at the end of the session, we'll have a chance to get caught up with questions. Article Ten.
John Lacourse again, warrant Article Ten, Transfer Station Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty five thousand dollars to be deposited into the Transfer Station Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required as of twelve thirty one twenty, this fund had a balance of a hundred and thirty seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Again, like the last warrant, this is another Capital Reserve Fund, so we'll have monies available for purchasing equipment for the transfer station. It could be associated with, you know, uh, you know, any kind of equipment moving around the floor itself or capital, you know, changes or modifications in the equipment line. Maybe Steve can respond to that again?
Yeah, it goes, it's the same as the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. We, the bailers are getting older. One of the bailers that we use the most is thirty years old now. We'd bought it used when the building was new. And the new bailers upwards of a hundred thousand dollars to get another used one, so we're just trying to add to the fund, so when the time comes, we can replace that equipment.
Thank you, Steve. So Article Ten, Transfer Station Equipment. While we're waiting for a question, uh, we'll all get a chance to see the transfer station on March night, and it's all its glory as we conduct our drive-through voting system there. Again, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about that process. Any questions on Article Ten, Karen?
No questions on Article Ten.
Okay, Article Eleven.
Scott Bugby from thirty one Spencer Lane. Mr. Moderator, warrant Article Number Eleven, Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to deposit into the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required as of the end of December, uh, thirty first, two thousand and twenty, this fund had a balance of two thousand eight hundred and, excuse me, two, two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and thirty one dollars. Sorry about that.
Okay. Any commentary about the article?
The Select Board is putting in a little bit more money than they did last year. We're anticipating some needs. There's a committee working on the renovation of the town hall and also in terms of any future building projects for the town. So we're putting aside a little bit more money. Town tradition elects to save toward things instead of just bonding for them, as we've found out in the last couple of years. So this is in preparation for that.
Thank you, Scott. Looks like we have at least one question come in, Karen?
Yes, uh, from Katrinka. Hi, Karen, we just checked, we had the name of the fund correctly. This is from an email, this is from an email from John Tappan. Fund balances in our custody as of thirty one December, twenty twenty, our Library Capital Reserve Fund, one thirty two oh eighty six fourteen. We Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifty nine cents.
So some of that was to clarify the previous article we discussed about the library, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, that doesn't clear up anything because they're referencing the title, the Lee Building Capital Reserve Fund. It doesn't have a hundred and thirty thousand, it has three hundred and eighty eight, according to that particular email. So the name of the fund is still incorrect. It's not been finalized, so I'm even more confused than before.
Regarding the Article Eleven, we do have a question from Jen Messider, one forty seven Wadley Falls Road. Town Hall renovation, will it go back to being the town hall offices or be used for meeting space? Just curious.
Okay, can somebody from the Select Board answer that?
Isaac, this is Scott Bugby from thirty one Spencer Lane. Yes, there's a, there's a committee looking at that particular thing. The plan right at the moment is to renovate the town hall, um, and turn it into a meeting space, uh, so we're looking at that. We have some cost for that, so we're working with the Select Board in terms of how to move this particular project forward. So yes, it would be meeting space. The plan would be to take the main hall, and that would be the main meeting space. In the space that's in the, um, Town Clerk Quack Spector's Office, the addition from nineteen sixty eight, there would be a small meeting room, there would be some bathrooms, possibly a kitchenette and a janitor's closet in that particular area. So that's what we're working on at the moment, but that's a work in progress.
It looks like in this article, uh, we're going to recommend an amendment. Somebody make an amendment, uh, recommendation to amend the wording of this article as well as the previous one about the, uh, the library. Hopefully, those amendments will be recommended by somebody on those boards, and so next Saturday, we'll be able to take them up as a, an amendment to the article before we transfer it to the official ballot. Any other questions coming in, Karen, on Article Eleven?
There are no other questions for Article Eleven.
Okay, Article Twelve.
Carrie Brown, Article Twelve, Internal Service Fund for accrued benefits. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be deposited into the Internal Service Expendable Trust Fund for accrued benefits. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. Just as a short comment, this, this fund, uh, maintains a, a balance in it so that if we have an employee of the town leave, uh, with unused benefits, i.e. has accrued some vacation or leave, uh, unused, uh, he would be reimbursed for that, and that money would come out of this fund.
Hey, thank you.
I'm sorry, as of twelve thirty one twenty, this fund had a balance of eighty one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions coming in on Article Twelve?
Currently, no questions for Article Twelve.
Thank you. We'll get caught up at the end if, uh, if none are coming in at this time. Article Thirteen.
Um, Scott Bugby, thirty one Spencer Lane, Mr. Moderator, warrant Article Number Thirteen, Contingency Fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the fiscal year two thousand twenty two for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise an appropriate twenty thousand dollars to go into this fund. The sum is to come from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised from general taxation. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse into the general fund. The governing body shall annually publish a detailed report of all expenditures for this fund. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
Okay, any commentary, Mr. Bugby?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, we'll pause for a minute, see if questions are coming in.
You have one question?
Okay.
From Jen Messider, one forty seven Wadley Falls Road. Is the general fund the same as the unassigned fund?
No, they're two separate things. The general fund is where general operating expenses come out of. The unassigned fund balance is a combination of cash we might have on hand and different assets and things on people who haven't paid their taxes, things like that. So it's basically kind of like, uh, the money we have available possibly. So the general fund is just, you know, where the police department gets paid out of, the town, uh, Selectman's Office gets paid out. It's a general fund for that, so it's two different things. So any monies that are left over in the general fund at the end of the year get swept usually into the unassigned fund balance. So I think it's a little over two million dollars at the moment, but not all that is cash. Like I said, some of it is, you know, taxes that people haven't paid yet, um, things like that, so.
Thank you.
We have no other questions regarding Article Thirteen.
Okay, we'll move to Article Fourteen.
Harry Brown.
Carrie Brown, Article 14, Bingo and Lucky Seven. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 287E relative to the conduct of games of bingo and the sale of lucky seven tickets? The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required.
Have any commentary on this article, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to speak, Mr. Bug, um, Mr. Quigley, please.
Uh, I recognize Karen Rossi.
Thank you. So every year, the Lee Fair Committee strives to make it a better event each year. And one thing that we've noticed that we're lacking is something to do from four, five-ish on through the recently added fireworks. The dinner's great. We don't really have anything to keep people there from four, after dinner, before, between dinner and the fireworks and late afternoon through the fireworks. So one thing that we thought that would be a huge draw would be bingo. And in order to legally host bingo, the select, the legislative body needs to vote in this RSA to allow the fair committee to host it. It still has to be run by a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. But if this is voted in, we can have bingo at the fair. So that's what this is for. We have no interest at this time in selling the lucky seven tickets, but it's a package request for the RSA.
Thank you, Karen. Looks like we have one question. Karen Long?
From Jen Messiter again. What is this RSA? What is the current state in Lee and what would change? This would be gambling bingo?
So get bingo unless you ask for a suggested donation, y- yes, is considered gambling. So this would be, so whoever hosts it will be able to say, okay, it's 50 cents a card or a dollar a card to play. That's the way, and this is the state RSA. So it, this is adopted, whoever hosts it will be able to say, okay, if you want to play, you have to pay 50 cents a card or a dollar a card or whatever, whatever the charge may be.
Thank you, Karen.
Currently have no other questions regarding Article 14.
Thank you, Article 15.
Article 15 is to change the purpose of the Fire Ponds and Cisterns Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the existing Fire Pond and Cistern Capital Reserve Fund to allow for the installation of new fire ponds and cisterns and to allow for repair and replacement of existing fire ponds and cisterns. And to name the Select Board as agents to expend. Currently, this fund allows for repair and replacement only of existing fire ponds and cisterns. The Select Board recommends this article. What it's saying is under, under this warrant, we can only repair, we can't, we can't replace and put in new ones. So it's simply asking for that authority to be rolled into this warrant article.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Questions about fire ponds and cisterns and capital reserve fund?
I might have left out the last sentence. The Select Board recommends this article, two thirds vote required.
Not seeing any questions popping up?
I have no questions on Article 15.
Okay, we'll move to Article 16.
Scott Bugby, 31 Spencer Lane, Mr. Moderator, warrant Article 16. Move grant funds from the unassigned fund balance into the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to deposit the sum of $4,500 into the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund. Said funds come from the unassigned fund balance. These funds represent grant monies received from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for the parish house assessment. The Select Board recommends this article, majority vote required. This particular amount of money in 2019, the town, um, contracted with AECM out of New Market, uh, to do a assessment of the parish house. And the committee that, uh, was dealing with that, um, submitted a grant request to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance. We rewarded the grant, uh, almost 50% of the cost. Um, but it came in before the, the, um, warrant was finalized, uh, came in after the warrant was finalized last year. Uh, so of course the money went to the general fund and of course, at the end of the fiscal year, went into the unassigned fund balance. So we're looking to put that money back into that particular fund because that's where the initial payment to have the assessment done came out of. So it's just reimbursing the fund.
You, Mr. Bugby?
I have one question.
Okay.
From Jen Messiter again. Parish House, so we got a grant, do we have a plan yet for that project?
That is something that's going to be worked on in the future. Right at the moment, there's no plans at the moment for that particular structure. Uh, there's no water to it. There's electricity still going to the building, but, uh, right now there's no plans for it at, at this particular time. It's something we're going to work on.
Thank you. All right, that completes the explanation of the warrant articles. Julie, uh, see if you can do this. Can we, we have 39 participants. Is there a way we can have them all come on with a raised hand function for the next phase of this? Uh, I think 39 is a manageable number that might be able to respond to raised hands. And if we can do that, maybe we can answer some questions and, uh, about the overall process, um, in, in a more simplified way.
They, they all have the ability to use the raised hand function now. Um, I can give them all the ability to speak.
Can, let's do this. Uh, let's take a, uh, a one minute break because I need a one minute break. And then, uh, we'll recur with, uh, a raised hand function for anybody that has commentary, wants to have questions about the process, and we'll see if we can do this in a, in a reasonable format. Okay, one minute break.
Articles after it are affected, not the one before, right?
Okay, so, um, let's, uh, let's roll into this. I'm going to need Karen Long to help me recognizing the raised hands because, um, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to catch all of them. So, um, when you're called upon with a raised hand, really is important for you to say who you are and your address. So we'll start with that process for each one. But before we open it up, I would just like to lay, lay a challenge if I could to those folks who are participants today, who are skeptical about whether their reasoned and reasonable responses and proposed amendments to these articles, uh, will be recognized. And I, and I just ask you to test the process. Uh, send us some good stuff this week. Let the governing body know exactly what your intentions are. Rather than shooting holes in the process right off the bat, let's test the process and see if our governing body will respond with, uh, your reasoned responses. And that's going to be the test of the democracy in this, in this process. And I ask you to use it. And I know the people who are participants at this point are the ones who are typically most engaged in the community and all our community functions, and they have good ideas. And, uh, we're going to challenge the, the governing body to, uh, to recognize that and represent the, the sentiments of the community throughout this process. That's going to be what solves our, was what hopefully will head off any problems we have, this Article 2, uh, where we seem to be risking a lot in asking the, the, uh, the voters, uh, to accept this process. So let's test it. Okay, that's mine. So, uh, so if we can, Karen, can you help me recognize raised hands out there?
Yes, uh, first we have a comment that came through on chat that I would like to read. It's from
Please do, yeah.
Lindy Sergeant, um, she wanted to thank us for putting, for your work, putting this new format together. The first raised hand that I see is Annie Gassowski.
Well, that, that's Paul.
Okay, Paul Gassowski.
Okay, Paul Gassowski, I keep coming through as Annie, but it, it's Paul Gassowski, 46 Lamprey Lane. And, uh, yeah, I would like to echo the comments from the, uh, from Lindy Sergeant and to thank you for, uh, doing today and all the work you've done, uh, to lead, leading up to this point. I, I think you've done a nice job today. Having said that, at 43 people's a bit of a disappointment. And I, I need to return to, I'm sorry, Don, but I, I need to return to Article 2 to make sure I understand it. My, my last question was, uh, about, uh, special meeting options if Article 2 fails. And when you answered that question, I couldn't tell whether you were said that, uh, if there is a special meeting in the future, if, if we end up going down that path, whether that special meeting is limited to Article 3 or whether other warrant articles can be part of that special meeting. So if you could just enlighten me again as to what the, uh, parameters are for any special meeting if heaven forbid we end up there.
Well, I, I believe from all the, uh, my understanding of the process is that if Article 2 does not pass, the all other articles except for the budget article, number one, uh, will stay the same. That is the voting of our, voting in of our, uh, elected officials. And Article 3, uh, we have an option to revisit, but the rest of the articles will be null and void. Now, uh, there are a lot of towns going through this process that we're going through right now. Uh, it is a possibility, I believe, that, uh, that there may be new legislation that appears that allows us to revisit something in some way. But at this time, uh, my understanding is that, uh, all the other articles will fail, which leaves our town hanging. And so it's a risk.
Yeah, if it is, just, just to follow up on that, it is, yeah, it is quite a risk and there, there's an awful lot of, uh, uh, necessary items in those warrant articles that typically do appear on the warrant and, uh, do, do pass. And a, a lot of departments would be affected, uh, their, their, their plans and their future planning and their capital reserves. So there's a lot of impact here. So, uh, somehow, uh, yes, somehow we need to, uh, inform, uh, the folks who are going to vote on, uh, March 6th, 9th, whatever day that is, uh, that there's, there's a lot of importance in these downstream articles. So, uh, thank you again for what you did today.
Well, thank you, Paul. Your, your input's always valuable. Another raised hand?
Yes, Irene, I apologize. Boyfort, Boyfort?
It's Boivier.
Thank you, I apologize.
But thank you. So I am, um, at 30 DeMarid Avenue, and I just have two questions, clarifications actually. Going back to Articles 4 and 5. So am I understanding this correctly? That the cost of the new fire engine is, okay, $650,000 approximately, but that does not, but it could be less than that. If you take into consideration the trade in value of the 2,000-year-old engine, is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then my next question goes back to, um, Article 15. So currently, since we don't have a separate fund for the installation of new fire ponds and cisterns, so where does that money come from right now?
Who can best answer that question?
So right now, the fund that we have doesn't allow us to add new cisterns or fire ponds. Um, so this would just add that to that warrant, to that, um, capital reserve fund. So currently there's nothing.
All right, so that has not been occurring. Okay.
Correct. But we do have plans, and this, we worked with, uh, Mr. Tappin on this recently, that this came up. Uh, we do have plans to add new ones in town. There's a couple of areas in town that don't have a good water supply, um, and we want to add those, so this would just allow for that.
Okay, all right. And I just have one comment. I've been very pleased with today's meeting. I think the instructions and all have been really clear and, um, I mean, I think it's the best that we can do, you know, under the circumstances, um, with the pandemic. So I'm, I'm very happy with today's meeting and, um, I hope, you know, that most people feel that way too and that we can go forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
The two individuals that spoke, Paul and Irene, could you lower your hand?
Oh, sorry about that.
And mute yourself, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen, are there other raised hands?
Yes, there's one, I just have to see who it is. Uh, Chris Regan.
Hi, this is Chris Regan, um, 19 Earl Drive. We just moved into town last month, actually. And I just had a couple of questions just for clarification. So if all the comments that you received today and through the week would then be considered by the Board of Selectmen and what they come up with would be the final warrant that the town members vote on, um, at the transfer station drive through? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do we get, when we get there, is there a written, must be a written ballot that includes the election and the ballot, um, the budget items?
So look, you'll, you'll get three ballots at the, at the, uh, voting. Uh, one will be for the election of officers. Uh, another ballot will be for all the articles. And another ballot will be for the school board, for the school, uh, district.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you could also lower your hand and put
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Your hand, Banks, you have raised your hand and unraised, raised and unhand, did you wish to speak?
No, but her husband does. Jim Banks, covering. I, I, I want to read a statement. The transfer station has fire sprinklers, but the safety building does not. Yet the safety building contains vastly more content value as well as occupants and critical facilities to the town. I feel that the safety building should be sprinkled prior to the housing of a new fire truck.
So Jim, how would, how would we address this as a part of our, our, our balloting? Uh, the, the articles are sort of fixed unless you wanted to make a, an, a proposal. a proposal for an amendment for the governing board next week?
Well, I, I think the difficult issue is that we don't know how much money we'd be talking about. That this really should be studied and some estimates produced before we can do anything else. But I think we need to move in that direction.
So who would what would be the mechanism for this? Maybe somebody on the select board could say how we would move in that direction.
This is Julie Glover, Town Administrator. So we cannot add a warrant article? At this point?
I understand that.
Okay.
So Jim's making a suggestion for an activity for us in the future to look into this?
Sure, that we can certainly look to get a price quote for this. Either one of the chiefs might be able to speak to this. And then the board could vote to take the money out of the town building capital reserve fund if they decided to go forward.
Would it be helpful for any commentary from the fire chief on this one, who's, runs the safety complex?
I know we've done this in the past. The, a prior fire chief went out and got quotes and brought it to the selectman of the town and it got voted down. It's something that we can definitely look at again. I don't know what the cost would be in our area because we have no water supply. We don't have a water main that comes through. We're going to have to put a cistern in, which could be fifty to eighty thousand dollars, probably a little bit more than that because of all the ledge in the area. And then we gotta get a fire pump that could be up to a hundred thousand dollars. So it'd be a substantial cost to retrofit the whole building. But it's definitely something we can look at.
Scott, do you think the prices for this that were acquired previously, do you think they're still relevant?
Or I, I don't think so. I think it was done probably at least ten years ago. So I think the price has changed on everything by now.
Ten years ago. So maybe with Jim's recommendation, we could revisit some of these numbers. So we'll just have to find a way to put it on the agenda of the select board in the future.
Dawn, I have a question. From Eric Sawtell. Would we need to appoint a study committee? Probably a question.
That I don't know. Julie, could you enlighten us? How would this work?
The process would be whatever the select board decides it should be.
I believe Jim Banks would like to speak again.
Okay.
No, I'm speaking again.
Do you have any more to say?
I don't have any more to say. They know what, they know what's important to me and
Mr. Banks, we can hear you.
I'm sure you can.
You had your hand raised again. Did you wish to speak?
Well, I think we didn't unraise it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, are there other raised hands at this time?
No, there are not.
Yes, there are.
Yes, there are.
Surprised we haven't had any questions about the, the voting process and our decisions to use the transfer station. I know that's in the minds of a lot of people, but we'll deal with it another time. So
We have two raised hands. We have
Okay, raised hands.
First was Rebecca.
That's Ashley Joseph, St. George, sixty Fox Garrison Road. I was just wondering if there is a plan or if we could put a plan in place on warrant Article Two for kind of a information campaign. So I know Karen does a lot of posting on the Lee Town pages and whatnot. And if there are other ways that we can get information out there to explain this over the next couple of weeks so that, you know, there's, there's more of a concerted information campaign from those of us who have participated in this process to our friends and neighbors so that, you know, we're, we're less likely to have issues with that warrant Article Two on voting day.
Well, thank you very much for that comment. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna be challenged this week to come up with a maybe a skeleton of a sort of a campaign in town to, to provide more information about it. And, you know, I think you're exactly right. We need a little salesmanship on this particular thing to help us out. Thank you.
John Tappan is requesting to speak.
Hello, this is Ann Tappan. And one eighty-seven Stepping Stones Road. In past years, the town has published a voter's guide. Once all the articles have been finalized, it gets mailed to everyone. And I think that's been a very useful document that goes out. And that's maybe an additional way to provide information about the warrant Article Two plus all the others. So I would encourage the town to to provide the voter's guide to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Who, who put together the voter's guide in the past? Does anyone know?
Yeah, I do. Town Administrator.
Okay. We can work together on that then, maybe.
Sure.
Thank you.
Did you have a question from Jim Messiter?
Okay.
If you'd like a question about if you'd like a question about the voting process, will the voting line go through the building or outside of it? How will this impact the usual dump day traffic?
Okay, so the dump will be closed for delivery of refuse on that day and recycling materials. So we're going to advertise ahead of time that the dump will be closed that day for its normal business. And that opens it up for us. We have a couple of days to prepare the site then, from Saturday till Tuesday, to put the things in place. We think we'll need to keep our poll workers comfortable. And we also want to, you know, have, you'll pull up in line. There'll be two stations to pull up to based on the alphabet. You'll receive, you'll check in, receive your ballots, move out of the building into a designated parking space in order for you to fill out your ballots. And you'll swing around the building and drop off your ballots. And so no trash that day, although I'm sure people will try to sneak it in there. Maybe we'll have to post somebody just to repel the Thank you for the question. What do you think, Karen? Other raised hands?
No. And no questions currently.
Any other comment from any of our panelists or select board? Department heads before we close the meeting?
John Lacorse, please.
Sure.
Again, good morning, everybody. John Lacorse, and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I think this has been a very interesting process, and I think it's extremely useful. I was one of the, I am one of the proponents to move in this general direction because I'm very concerned associated with the COVID pandemic outbreak. And I am not convinced that it's going to disappear in the next few months. My sense is we'll still be dealing with this thing over for another year before possibly we get the proper vaccines to clear it up. But I also want to thank all the participants for being involved in this, especially for the moderator and staff and the, you know, the department heads associated with the town of Lee for participating as well. It's trying time for everybody. Hopefully, we'll get the information out as soon as possible and try to clarify as much as possible. But at the same time, I think this is probably the best way to handle it. So I do appreciate all the efforts being put into this. And I hope people have patience when we get to the transfer station. And I'm quite sure it'll be worked out properly and we'll get voting done. So I wanted to thank everybody for participating. This is, it's unique. Maybe the moderator write a book about it, uniqueness of the town of Lee during a pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lacorse.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
This is Scott Boggy, thirty-one Spencer Lane. Usually, when you note in terms of the positions that are open, you note in terms of who is running for those positions. Could the town clerk tell us the people that have signed up? Sign-up date was, you know, the last date was yesterday. So could she do that for us, please?
So that's the, that, is this process still open for people to apply?
No, it was closed yesterday.
Okay, all right.
Can she tell us the people that signed up for the positions that are open, please?
Okay, Linda.
Yes. For Selectmen, three years, we have John Lacorse, Katrin Casper, and Jonathan Moss. Trustee of the trust fund for three years, Michelle Martenson. Library trustee for three years, Annie Gazowski. Cemetery trustee, Jeffrey Lapordo for three years. Advisory Budget Committee, two positions for three years, we have Stacy Waits and Patricia Barber. There was no one that signed up for Advisory Budget Committee, two-year position. Those are the names that will be on the ballot.
Thank you.
Other questions and comments?
I have one, if I might.
Sure.
I have one, Dawn.
Karen?
Karen Long, twenty-two Lee Hill Road. Just want to make it clear that while we're doing drive-through voting, the process that we use for in-person voting remains the same. So people will still, you know, check in, be verified, their name checked off the book and receive a ballot. So the, the, the process that we go through for verification and other types, you know, the whole process is the same, other than the fact that instead of walking into the safety complex or the school, you'll be doing it in your car. And also to clarify some misinformation that I've been seeing online, we did not have, under HB eleven twenty-nine, the option to have a virtual deliberative session in in-person voting. Eleven twenty-nine required us to utilize the drive-through voting process. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. My earlier comment would be, those, we've had some comments of people saying it's not, they don't have a lot of privacy to vote if they show up in their car with their spouse or whatever. So that's up to you to decide who's going to be in your, your private on-wheels voting booth when you come into the system on the ninth of March, but.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask you an additional question, please?
Sure, certainly, Scott.
Could you or one of the supervisors of the checklist talk about signing up to vote? And also in terms of maybe Linda can talk about, I believe absentee ballots are available for this election as well. Could, could you have them speak to those two questions, please?
So is there somebody on from the checklist, supervisor of the checklist that might talk to, speak to any participants that we still have about registering to vote? Supervisors of the checklist?
Bambi is on.
Bambi?
I'd be happy to talk about that.
Thank you.
We are going to have in the the little building that is used for swap shop, we're going to be registering people. So you'll be coming in, coming all the way around the outside and parking there first and then going up and getting in line. So you'll come in to see us there if you come that day. We would prefer you come to, on Monday, Wednesday, or Fridays to the clerk's office and register there. And I don't have it in front of me, but you can see online, we do have one more session that you can come to us and sign up at that point in person as well. That will be, I believe, we're having that at the library.
Thank you, Bambi. How about Linda, talking about the absentee voting process?
Yes, just to reiterate, if you will, for the, any new voters, they will be able to sign up at the day of election. However, I would encourage them to come to our office, Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, between eight AM and four PM to register to vote. It would be easier for them because they will have to remain in their cars at the election day. As far as absentee ballots, you can request an absentee ballot with the application form, which you can find on our website under the town clerk or elections or forms. You would, or you can also come to the town clerk's office and fill one out. Once we receive the ballot request, we will hold them until we get the ballots in, and then we will mail them out. Once you, the residents receive their absentee ballots after requesting them, you can, you complete them and then you can either mail them back or deliver them in person to our office, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Or a designated person which is listed on our website can return the ballot. So those are the three ways you can return the ballot. And we will get those out as soon as the articles are, are finalized and we send them to the printer and the printer gets them back to us.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask you a follow-up question?
Certainly, Scott.
Um, it's my understanding that hopefully it's still the same when we did the November elections, that the definition for getting an absentee ballot included the pandemic coronavirus issue. Is that still applicable? So if somebody's uncomfortable about going to the polling place, can they still use that as their reason for getting an absentee ballot?
Yes, thank you. I didn't mention that, yes. COVID is still a valid reason why you cannot come to the polls. And we had over a thousand for the presidential absentee ballots. So yes, if you do not feel comfortable coming to the polls, you may request an absentee ballot due to the coronavirus.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott and Linda. And just to comment, you know, we had so many absentee ballots in the last election. Maybe we'll have a few less. Whereas people will feel a little safer being in their car. So hopefully that will transpire. Other comments?
I think you have, I think you have a question. You have two questions now.
I see them. The first one is from Eric Sawtell. And will voters still be able to drop off an absentee ballot at the transfer station on the day of voting?
Yes, before five o'clock in that, on that day. Since they'll, they can be in their car anyway, we won't have a special drop-off. They'll pull into line with the regular voters. And they'll show their ID and drop off their absentee ballot, which will go into a special container at the check-in station.
Okay, and our second question is from Jim Messiter. For absentee ballots, will there be an online track my ballot site like we had in November?
Can you answer that one, Linda?
Um, I believe, I will double-check and post this, but I believe because it's a town function, not a state, that you probably will not. But I, I'll have to confirm that. I apologize. I will, I'll post something on the website to, to let you know, but I, my guess is maybe not.
I did see that question asked to the Secretary of State's office, and the answer was they're awaiting clarification.
Oh, thank you. When we do receive them back, just, we do input the date we received, well, it's all input into the state system when it's requested, when it's mailed, and when it's returned. So I guess the question would be, does a state make that available for town elections, town and city elections, not state elections?
Mr. Moderator, one other thing, just, just to let people know. Some people know this and some people don't, but the town hall is now moved. It's at two forty-nine Caleb Highway. So just when people go to the town clerk's office, they go to the new location, not the old building. So just so people are aware.
Thank you, Scott. Other questions or comments? Well, hearing none, we will close the meeting. We reconvene next Saturday morning at nine on the sixth? We reconvene next Saturday morning at nine on the sixth in the interim. And oh, by the way, that, that will not be an interactive session. Basically, that will be the governing body responding to all the reasoned recommendations, comments, and amendments that you folks have set forward throughout this week. So again, challenge you to give it some thought, give them some good things to work with, well-reasoned responses and suggestions. And we'll, we'll finalize the ballot next week. Thank you so much for, well, do we have another question pop up, Karen?
We did, and I was answering it.
Okay.
Don's comment about depositing, it's from Eric again. Depositing absentee ballots in a special container, possibly generating some interesting comments. As I understand, we're not having a special container. They'll be depositing it the same way as everyone else who's doing drive-through. Is that correct?
Correct. We might up, we might be putting a sharper edge on this procedure between now and March and we hopefully let everyone know.
Okay.
All right, hearing no other comments at this time, we'll close the session with tremendous gratitude to all of you that have been involved, especially with the governing board and all the administrators of the town and everything else. This has been a little disappointing with the number of participants, but we will reconvene next Saturday at nine. Thank you. And good day.
Thank you.